Hello, everyone. We'll start checking to make sure we had everyone we need and we'll get started shortly. I'm just looking for Monica. Am I missing her on the screen here? Nope, I think so. Wait just a little longer. Victoria, if you could just check that all administrators that you're expecting are... There's Monica. And Victoria, won't you let me know that we have the administrators we need, then we'll get going?
I think we're all here.
Okay. And welcome, everyone, to the August 6, 2020 Edmond Board of Education Work Session. Do I have a motion to bring us out of exec into public session? And I see Judy, second by no less, all in favor. We are now in public session at 8:01. So again, for anyone in the community that's listening in that has not participated or observed a board work session before, we do these from time to time when we want to do maybe a little deep dive into a specific topic. It's so it's typically not a business meeting, although we do have a couple of business items just because of their timeliness that we will take care of tonight. But most commonly, they get used around budget time to give us some extra time and they're used to, again, just give us a chance for the board to ask more questions, to clarify some more things from the administration, but to do it, you know, in a transparent way so the community is able to see our questions, hear the answers. But the one difference from a regular board meeting is we will not be taking questions from the community tonight. And especially on this particular topic, not only is it just not the nature of a work session, but we've been having these parent forums and we'll be having other parent forums coming up shortly. And on this topic, we think those forums are going to be much more appropriate for public interaction because they're going to be more narrowly defined down to different age groups as opposed to some things across the entire K through 12, which just really isn't productive since in this situation, the why the issues and concerns are can be very different, as we talked about before, from a kindergartner to a 10th grader, for example. So with that, I will turn it over to you, Victoria, to kick off. I believe you have some presentations from the administration for us.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Alec. Yes, we will be having a number of conversations this evening related to three different areas of the reopening plan. The teaching and learning plan, which will begin with a presentation by Michael Curtin, Director of Curriculum and Instruction, and then followed by a question and answer and discussion with the board and all of the other administrators on the call. Then we will also do a brief presentation on health and safety and answer some of the top questions we've been receiving about health and safety. The last time we had an update was at the July 21 meeting, so we'll do an update on health and safety and also on facilities. And to Alec's point, we're in the process of scheduling a couple of different meetings. Tomorrow, I'll be sending out a communication to parents and letting them know that the next meeting is scheduled for them and we'll dive more into health and safety issues. And then, as Alex said, we'll also be scheduling meetings at the school, well, as some grade band levels, depending on the differences in schedules. So with that, I'd like to turn it over to Michael Curtin.
Thank you, Victoria. I'm going to now try to share my screens because I do have some slides here to share. Let's see. If I did that correctly, you should be looking at a slide that says e-learning survey data and update on e-learning. Is that what you're seeing?
Yes.
Okay, great. So thanks for having me here tonight. I have been spending a lot of time talking to students, parents, teachers, everyone else about e-learning and what that will look like next year. And as Victoria mentioned, we are required to submit a plan to the state that explains what we're going to do in each of three scenarios. Fully remote learning, similar to what we had in the spring. Hybrid learning, where sometime is on campus and other time is at home, and then fully face-to-face with social distancing, where everyone's in school at the same time throughout the school week. So the part that I'm going to be focusing on, that plan has about probably a dozen sections, and one of them, obviously importantly, is teaching and learning. And so what I'm going to be sharing with you tonight is largely reflected in what we've sent to the state so far. Also, as you know, we did a series of teacher surveys and parent surveys at the end of the school year back in June and early July. And I've spent a lot of time during July trying to kind of analyze the survey data that we got and then to kind of boil it down really into what are our lessons learned from that experience. And so tonight, I'll be kind of organizing the whole presentation around those sort of findings, like I had about 10 or so broad findings from that that whole process. And at the end of that, and so for each one, I'll kind of explain what I found out and then talk about some of the steps we're taking to address that particular issue. And then at the end, I'll talk about sort of more broadly what our instructional model for the coming year, regardless of setting, will look like. That's starting to come into much sharper focus. So very quickly, the surveys were done, like I said, in late June and early July. They included a number of sections that included everything from, you know, what's how effective was asynchronous learning? How effective were office hours, so on and so forth? How did people perceive various facets of the e-learning program? What concerns do they have going into next year? And there was a specific area, a specific section for teachers on professional learning, as well as some open-ended questions. What went well? What would you have liked to see, you know, better? And any final comments? We had pretty good response rates on these surveys. Almost half the faculty responded. And parents, it's hard to tell because in some cases, a single parent may have responded for multiple children or may have even done multiple surveys for multiple children, or maybe two parents did this. But, but, you know, I think it's safe to say that we had over a fifth of the parents respond. So on to the findings. And just one other thing, from time to time with some of these where appropriate, I'll be kind of asking one of my administrative colleagues to kind of take the microphone and talk a little bit about some of these different areas. So first and foremost, what came through loud and clear in looking at parent surveys is that the parents wanted more from us, from e-learning. One parent said, if school does not reopen and distance learning continues to be at home, I feel there should be more class instruction per subject, which would look more like their real-time schedules. And so that was a common refrain where parents said, we wish there were more frequent, real-time meetings, that they were longer, and in some cases saying they should really, they should mirror the school day. So to address that issue, we are planning, regardless of setting, to have instruction and learning throughout the school day. I want to stipulate that that does not necessarily mean kids watching teachers at the front of the classroom in front of a camera for the entire day. I don't think that's ideal, but we will structure the day in such a way that kids are learning and have access to their teachers. And I'll explain more about that in a few minutes throughout the day. We've also spent a lot of time over the summer engaged in professional learning for our teachers in how to establish and implement a hybrid instructional model in both online and face-to-face spaces. So how to bridge those spaces, how to make it so that kids benefit and there's some level of consistency as they move from one to another. Another finding was that parents feel overwhelmed. And I know, speaking as a parent, I felt overwhelmed too. But certainly, concerns about childcare. Forty-one percent of the parents said they were either very or somewhat concerned about what they'll do this year if they have to arrange childcare. And also just the burden of becoming more of a teacher, more of a partner in delivering instruction to kids. And for a lot of people said that that they either didn't know how to do it or they didn't have time to do it as well as they would have liked. So, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to do that. The steps that we're taking to address that, we are investigating an optional sort of study academy program where kids would have an opportunity or families would have an opportunity if we go, for example, with a half-day schedule, where families could work with an outside provider. And we're talking to a number of the different daycare or childcare providers in the area about what this might look like, where they would go there and have supervised time and tech access to technology to be able to continue their e-learning, not in their homes, but also not on campus. And also, we are working on creating more resources and planning to make sure that parents feel more comfortable with some of the tech tools that the kids need to be able to use from home. A third finding was that teacher time and office hours should not be scheduled into the school day. Of the various modalities, this one, both teachers and parents agreed that this was the one that least contributed to students' learning. And when you think back, we had sort of three phases and office hours were our first dipping of the toe into the water of live synchronous interaction. And it served its purpose back then, but then eventually we moved on to actually going through new content. And now, especially as we look at expanding live instruction throughout the school day, it becomes sort of superfluous. So there is no dedicated teacher time or office hours in either of the proposed schedules. It would happen as it normally would in school. At EHS, it's before and after school. And in the elementary schools, it's sort of one-on-one attention at various times during the day. I mentioned the extended live instruction and I mentioned about the office hours for EHS students. It was interesting, there was disagreement. This was a polarizing issue among parents, disagreement over the quality of the communication. On the one hand, you had a lot of comments like, I found the flow of communication from the administration to be very helpful. I never felt out of the loop or in the dark. And then another one who said, parents are partners in education. While teachers may be accustomed to dealing with varying schedules or district communications, parents are not. It needs to be easier and more timely. So, you know, some people gave us a pat on the back and said, you did a great job. Others wanted more or different communication. So one thing we're going to do is K through 12, we're going to have all teachers adopt Google Classroom for posting of class materials and also ask that they provide a weekly schedule of topics and assignments for each of the courses and content areas that they teach. I'm going to turn it over to Paul Garofano, our tech director, to talk a little bit about one of the really big positives that came out of this study about our technical support. Paul? Paul, are you there?
He might not be. I don't know if...
Okay, I did see him come in before, but anyway, I can, I can talk about this.
Paul is here. He may have trouble unmuting because he still has no power. This is Eve.
Can you, can you hear us now? Okay. I am muted.
No worries. I'll take care of it. Generally speaking, both parents and teachers had a lot of good things to say about the quality of the tech support. Teachers in particular really spoke very highly of the work that Paul and Andrea Nash and others on the tech support staff did to keep them up and running under what I have to imagine were just impossible circumstances. So they really rose to the occasion. There was a general feeling that, you know, the level of technical support was helpful. And I know that Paul has been working with his staff on a lot of professional learning. You see a number of the steps that they took written at the bottom of this slide, providing technical assistance and professional learning throughout the summer and looking at policies, looking at infrastructure to make sure that we're ready for next year. So we're feeling like we did a good job there and that we are continuing to look for ways to do an even better job. Rethinking elementary specials. For that one, I'm going to ask, I believe it was, I forgot if it was Eve or Jen now, to talk a little bit about the experience of elementary specials that we learned about.
Hi, everyone. It's Eve. Thank you for having me tonight. What we heard as feedback from the parents was that specials should be separated by class, not just grade, so they can actually engage and the teacher has the ability to teach. As you may recall, many of the specials were done as a whole-grade instruction rather than by classes. So there was a lot of feedback that we received to make the classes smaller. There was also the question of if there is, or feedback that if there is any way to allow children to engage safely with social distancing in specials in person next year, I would encourage that, even if it is less frequent than normal. We had a lot of feedback when it came to specials and we took some steps to recognize that we cannot do full-grade online specials. That is something that we cannot continue this year. It will not be 80 students on one art lesson. We will be doing it by classes. We are also currently investigating several online and in-person models. This is very interesting because as we reviewed the data that was recently submitted by parents, we see that there is a request to have many of the specials remote, given the time period. But when we had our student forums this past week and we had about 20 to 25 students on, I would say that 95% of the students polled from CLE Place said they want their specials in person. So we are continuing to determine what the best model is and how to meet the needs of all learners in regard to specials, which include library, music, art, and physical education. Thank you, Mike.
Thanks, Eve. Yeah, so I guess in essence, we're still working on what the plan will look like for specials and we're still getting feedback, but we know that the one plan that doesn't work is what we did back in the spring. So we know that we're not going to go back to that model. Mandate a cameras-on policy. Both parents and teachers really lamented the fact that many students chose to turn their cameras off during live instruction and made it very hard, made it very, much a much more passive experience. We suspect that at least in some cases, students could have been off in the kitchen getting a snack while class was happening and their camera was off. So we're going to actually have a cameras-on policy for all students and teachers during video conference instruction. This, again, I think I spoke to the board about this several times during the spring. Assessment continues to be a real struggle for teachers. It was the area that teachers showed the least level of confidence in. And there are issues about maintaining the integrity of assessments and a whole lot of other issues. But we've been working with our professional learning over the last weeks and months on sort of different approaches to assessment that focus either on very frequent formative assessments, which are short, sort of like dipstick assessments to see, did they understand what they just learned this period or where, you know, this week or whatever? Less, lower stakes and ideas to see, am I ready to move forward in the content or do we need to kind of loop back? Where are we? And then when it is a broader assessment, a more sort of high-stakes assessment, a summative assessment, to look at sort of alternate ways, project-based learning and authentic assessments that are not necessarily paper and pencil tests, especially in a full remote scenario, I think paper and pencil tests, we know from the spring that they're very difficult. Both parents and teachers shared a lot of concerns about students' mental health during and once they return from the quarantine or the the remote learning period. As you can see, there is a lot of concern among both teachers and parents. Oh, and at this point, actually, I'll turn it over to Joe Shippe, our Director of Pupil Personnel Services, to talk a little bit about what he's been working on in terms of helping us to meet this need. Joe?
Thanks, Mike, and thank you all for being here tonight. We have a committee of school counselors and school psychologists that have been working on the mental health concerns and the social and emotional well-being of students. We recognize that students are going to come back to school in various, you know, conditions of perhaps some distress and, you know, and a bit of what we would term trauma, if you will. So we are, we're, we've adopted a trauma-informed model. or approach to looking at how we're going to support students when they come back and not just students, but all of the staff and faculty and families in the community because we've all been in this together and we're, we're moving ahead together and we need to know how best to support one another. So this is going to consist of four phases. One is a phase of professional development, which will emphasize information for faculty and staff about the kinds of things to look for in students who may be having difficulty coming back. And assessment as well as assessment and education on self-care. The second phase is an educational phase where information sessions will be held for faculty and staff as well as for parents and guardians. And and for students that, in a developmentally appropriate fashion, educating them about the kinds of things that can be happening emotionally for people who have undergone difficult conditions like this and, as I said, what's referred to as traumatic stress. The third phase is an assessment phase. We're considering using a universal screening for students with parent and guardian consent to determine how many students may be impacted by this particular situation that we've been going through. Then a period of faculty and staff referral to to our school psychologists and school school counselors, as well as parent referrals to school psychologists and school counselors. The final phase is an intervention phase. This is where we will be determining level of tiered support for students. And that execution of those tiered supports occur in three, in three tiers. The first tier is sort of broad educational information sessions that that can be sort of a psychological first aid sessions for the entire school or grade level, grade levels, and that can take the the form of assemblies and educational kinds of forums. The second tier are group or class, social and emotional learning sessions. And we have some of those things already in place at the high school. We have something called Teen Talk at the elementary school. The Stanford Harmony Classroom SEL lessons that have been utilized and they can be targeted in our school counselors and school psychologists can help classroom teachers with that. And the final tier, the third tier, is a is more targeted in-school counseling and/or referral to outside community providers or agencies. I'm going to follow up as well with some of the other things that we need to take a look at in terms of establishing an advisory council, developing a comprehensive list of resources and referrals to address mental health, behavioral and emotional support services and and/or programs so that we can distribute those to parents and guardians. Providing professional development opportunities for faculty and staff on how to support students in times of stress like this. Identifying opportunities to provide social and emotional support for faculty and staff and finally, monitoring student and adult attendance to determine any social emotional factors that may be contributing to frequent or chronic absenteeism. So it's a rather, you know, comprehensive experience that we're going to be looking at. And of course, there's a lot more that we need to know and a lot more that is being investigated throughout the nation right now, actually throughout the world, about how our students and families, as well as our faculty and staff have been affected by this experience.
Thanks, Joe. Another finding among teachers is that they they felt that they had a lot of great opportunities for professional learning and they want more. And that we need to really continue to provide that learning. An interesting finding is that there's been a shift in terms of what they want to learn. I would say six months ago, it was teach me how to use the tools. I need to know how to use Google Classroom. I need to know how to use Screencastify, which makes sense. These are just a sample, what you see on the screen, of some of the various areas they could sort of vote on. But by and large, what they really said they wanted was not instruction in how to use specific tools, but rather, what are the, how do you organize online learning? What does an online learning lesson plan look like? How do I assess kids? So more of the pedagogy, which I think is a good step forward. Shows that we've, as an organization, kind of moved past one level to another. And we've been doing tons over the summer. Our teachers have been working very hard over the summer to learn in lots of different formats and about different aspects of hybrid learning. And I would, you see some of those listed at the bottom. Just to note, we we are asking that we move all of the superintendent's conference days to that first week in September to give teachers extra time to do some more professional learning and to collaborate with one another. We have a lot to get organized with as we kick off. And so the superintendent's conference days that are sort of scattered out, scattered throughout the school year, we're going to ask that those be moved to the first week and that schools start a little bit later as a result. So one other piece that I did before I move on to, well, what does it look like when you connect all these dots? Is that I did a little bit of appreciative inquiry, which means focusing on sort of a postmortem of something that happened and understanding what went right, right? Like, so everyone is, it's easy to talk about the things that went wrong in the spring. But actually, as an organization and as individuals, I'm extremely proud of what we accomplished in the face of such uncertainty and such daunting challenges. And so what I did is I actually tried to identify teachers who who received praise from parents, from students who were, and I sat down and I interviewed them over the last month or two. And to try to understand, well, what, why were they successful? What were the things that they did? And I wrote like a short report for the teachers called What Went Right? And it really takes each of these dozen or so sort of themes and talks about, talks in more specificity about why this was important for the teacher and what it really means. So some of these phrases may not mean a lot to you here on the screen, but I wanted you to know that we did do this and loop back and try to understand what were some of the really successful best practices that emerged and to then share them out with the teachers. Well, like I said, when you connect all the dots, when you consider all the feedback that we received, all the things that we learned, if we have to be in a situation where we're providing online instruction again, which seems to some extent likely, what is that going to look like? So for, and and what we've developed, or I'm in the process of developing and sharing with the teachers, is a broad set of expectations that describe our vision for how instruction should be delivered next year, regardless of the setting, whether it be in-person at home or some mixture there therein. These are the things that that all of our kids should be getting. And so top of the list, some of the key features are that it focuses on instruction throughout the school day, both in-person and online. That does not mean live streaming every second of class when I'm not actually in the classroom. But it does mean that there's a structure and a schedule and opportunities to connect. And in fact, that's the phrase that I think really captures my vision, our vision, remote but connected, which is different. If if a teacher sees kids on Monday, Monday morning and says, this afternoon, I want you to do X, Y, and Z, and I'll see you on Tuesday, that's homework. That's not instruction. That's homework. And that may have value. But at the other end of the spectrum, if the teacher says, you know, on Monday afternoon, I'll see you in 10 minutes. And then there's instruction via video conference for the next two and a half hours. That's another extreme. Between those two extremes is where I think we need to be, remote but connected. So for example, I may have in my, as part of my sixth period class, my sixth period class this week or today happens at 1:00 PM. And it might start with a 10-minute video conference where the teacher brings us all together, gives us a plan, teaches, does a small mini lesson, and then says to both the in-school class and the home kids, okay, I want you to do this activity. And at 1:40, we'll all come back together and just check in. And maybe there's a Google Doc or a chat window where kids at home can stay in touch with what's happening on in the classroom. But it's not that they are sitting there watching kids in the classroom and watching the teacher that whole time. I think that would be very counterproductive. Universal adoption of Google Classroom. I spoke a little bit about that. Cameras on during video conference instruction. Assessment for learning. I kind of described what that would look like and the social emotional support that Joe mentioned. And I just want to say that this is a very high-level summary of a document that includes more detail and which I will provide to the board once I've had a chance to collaborate further with the teachers on it on some of the details in it. But this, these, I think, are the the broad outlines. And with that, I think I will pause and take some questions. Unless I missed anything, if any of my administrative colleagues have anything they want to add?
Thanks, Mike.
Okay, board members. People have things they'd like, Noesh. You're still muted, Noesh.
Okay, perfect. So Mike, thanks for that presentation. And the two things that struck me, first of all, you know, most of us have the tendency of looking out. Hey, this is doing that. This school is doing this. And the first thing that struck me is that you really did the grounds up, bottoms up what works for us. And I'm delighted that a lot of approach, in fact, everything you've done is more bottoms up rather than, you know, just trying to be a copycat. So I'm sure you're copying a few good practices, but the approach is bottoms up. So I congratulate the the admin and the team for taking that effort to identify the needs which are specific to our community and the feelings with our parents and the children. So so thanks for doing that. One, so few questions, but I'll ask one and then I'll rotate it with the other board members. First is, I would like to know what is the administration done to evaluate the effectiveness of the teachers? So we hear that teachers are doing a lot of training. And, you know, so I just want to know, as administration, what have we done to kind of see whether things are, you know, being and have you done or like the administration done any kind of training or that just basically makes you more competent because the whole model has changed?
Mike, you're muted.
I'm sorry, I got dropped from the call and then I we've done some work, all of us have done work, attended workshops, effective sort of professional groups in the region and have been learning instances in terms of what quality online instruction looks like. We're all participating in with IDE, company that we brought in to help teachers learn about hybrid learning. In that, and we actually had earlier in the in the summer, we had a full-day workshop with them. In terms of evaluating teachers, I mean, the spring, we were just trying to get through, quite honestly. We've used these surveys and these interviews to try to get a sense en masse about where where we did well and where we need to improve. New York State EPR program last year because of COVID, but as far as I know, it's in what that will look like with virtual classes, we still need to kind of figure out, but there will be, you know, we will be engaged in observing teachers in some way, regardless of the setting that we find ourselves in in September and beyond. Does that answer your question?
Could I also add, just add something? So you all know the tri-state consortium and part of the tri-state is the when we do a self-study and ask them to come on an area that we've chosen. The tri-state consortium also is a professional development arm for for us. So the principals participate in groups. Mike, in terms of instruction, as well as his NITEN group, I participate with the superintendents and they've been pushing of best practice to us because they kind of served as a clearing and not only do we get every advertisement possible for cleaning supplies. We will professional development offering for remote learning. So help to all of us as well, in terms of the articles we're discussing and and developing.
And then second point that I heard from a few community members, which were able to quickly master the whole e-learning, you know, us, idea generation or discussion have happened within the teachers. So like a math department get together and they share what has really worked for them and because it's become cross discussion. So has there been any kind of a cross discussion within department with tips? So anything that you want to share on that?
Yep. So all of our, I think, all of the elements summer in meetings with Shelley Klein, our literacy consultant, sharing what they found to have them some of the best practices in that area. I've just started to see some amazing chairs who are organizing ways to share among their their department members, like World Languages. Jonathan Hanson Brook told me today that he's having his whole department participate in a mock online class so that they can kind of give each other feedback and kind of share, you know, how they would approach it. So I know that Dan Shuckett, too, was pushing out resources to his teachers, a lot of, and I've actually been really impressed at teachers' willingness to come to faculty meetings and department meetings and other meetings throughout the summer. You know, just to try to get ready for next year. They are, they are leaning in by and large to making sure that that they and their colleagues are ready. And of course, that that appreciative inquiry thing that I did where I interviewed our teachers to understand what they did well and to then share it out with all of the teachers, that certainly was an attempt to do what you described, which is, you know, find out what's working well, what's really resonating and to then find ways to replicate it next year.
Okay, thanks. I will just come back because I just want my friends to, my colleagues to have some chance. So I have one or two more.
Nolesh, if I can, if I can add to that, it's Paul Garofano. I'm back online, of course, when I had my two seconds to address my slide, you know, I'm at a bit of a quandary here with that power and internet, but I found the right spot on my property. And I'll add that we have run over, we've run about eight STI, Scarsdale Institute of Technology, Scarsdale Teachers Institute courses from closure in June until now. And those courses consist of all of our teachers, K-12, and Andrea Nash, as you know, who is our a technology specialist, integration specialist. She works with all of the teachers and is, you know, working with them in in different groups and different cohorts. And they're constantly sharing best practices and best methodologies. So, you know, that's something that we're capitalizing capitalizing on and we'll continue to do that.
Thanks, Paul. So Cottin did a good job. Mike did a good job on your slides. So 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 we have those insights. So but but thank you for repeating those. Thank you.
You owe me five bucks, Paul.
I heard, Mike. Thank you.
Monica?
Yes, you guys talked a lot about your planning process, all the different things. Yes, you guys talked a lot about your planning process, all the different things you're looking at, the things that you've looked, as Nolesh said, from the ground up, organic to our district. And you've also talked about the best practices and going out to consultants and in form, more formal ways. But in a lot of ways, what we're trying to do here is a new frontier. And it's not a new frontier just for us. It's a new frontier for every school district across the country. So what are some of the ways you guys are maybe a little more informally working together or passing around great ideas or learning from one another that you think? Because I, I know that some teachers saying, well, this school district's doing that and that school district's doing that. But I'm pretty sure you guys are all talking a little bit. And I think we'd like to hear a little bit more about how you communicate with your, your sister schools.
Sure. Yeah, no. I'm a member of the PNW BOSI's Curriculum Council. We've been having regular meetings throughout the summer. We spend a lot of time sharing best practices. And I know that my colleagues are in similar groups, certainly tri-states. It is and it isn't a no front, a new frontier in the sense that, you know, it's a new frontier for public schools by and large, especially in this area. But there's an established body of knowledge of what works well with online learning that we have to then adapt to the K-12 sphere. You know, and so we're also trying to take advantage of that and really understanding from colleges, from online schools, you know, how to do this well. I mean, we were scrambling in the spring. I think we're better prepared now in terms of knowing what does and what doesn't work. And certainly like the IDE work. IDE, for a long time, has done professional learning on a system they developed called Lattic, the Learner Active Technology Integrated Classroom, I think. And a lot of what they've put into their hybrid learning workshops really is a distillation of the parts of Lattic that have proved, have been proven effective in many districts, especially many districts in Westchester over the years. So the Lattic districts, the ones who've been working with IDE for a while, they, that takes a long time to implement. I mean, it's a really whole school reform. What, what IDE has done is sort of created this sort of crash course on the pieces that are most applicable to teaching in this moment. And we just finished the first week of those courses and we have some more coming next week. So I think that will be extraordinarily helpful in terms of taking strategies and structures that have been proven to be effective in other districts like ours and bringing them to bear in Edgemont and in, in e-learning.
Monica, if I could add to that, we've been collaborating in other areas like hiring. So for example, we, that was new, that we all had to quickly interview, we, we had to come up with a whole process for getting to know a teacher, having some sort of simulation and, and having a number of different ways to get to know the teacher or in, in some cases with Mary Rose, the administrator. So I, we, we learned a lot. We worked together with other school districts to put together processes and then kept developing them, sharing them with each other until we came to a model that I, I think is quite good. The only thing you don't know about a person is their height. By the end of the process. Everything else you know. And, and it's really been a great opportunity to share among districts because as you said, in that regard, we were all learning and had to shift to that at the same time.
I would just add anecdotally, when I have conversations, say with Victoria or in small meetings with other administrators, I can't tell you how many times I've heard, I just got off the phone with superintendent or Kyle, I just got off the phone with this principal and that thing. So there's clearly, in addition to these more formal structures and sharing of information, there's a lot of just ad hoc going on as well. So.
And, and I, and I, I'd like to add to that too, that I know that what happened almost immediately when all of this happened was of People Personnel Services across the county and did on online media for a good portion of the, the, a number they were daily in the afternoon seeing what we were dealing with in terms of our particular but certainly from, for get to know people in neighboring districts and to realize want to be very supportive to one phone numbers and you text them in the middle of, of or even just having a phone ring if you have any ideas. So that's been happening. The things that I have realized within Monica that mentioned this, it's not the same in every district. Take their model and transport it into we approach things can be different, the way we schedule things. Ideas from people.